All right, I've got six o'clock, so I will call this meeting of the Sparks Planning Commission to order on July first of two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Madam Secretary, could we have the roll? Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
All right, thank you. So we will now go into a period of public comment. This is a general public comment. We will have public comment for specific items. Just a reminder to those of the public who do wish to speak, there are public comment cards that we ask you to fill out. They are just out there in the lobby, so if you can fill those out before we get to the item on which you wish to speak, that would be much appreciated. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at this time? All right, seeing none, we will close this public comment and move on to item four, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion? All right, we have a motion. Can I get a second? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Andriola, a second by Commissioner Kramer. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, can we please have a vote? Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to approval of the minutes, and we'll start with the minutes of the June first, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission Study Session. Can I get a motion? All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Kramer. Any second.
I'll second that motion.
Yes. Yes. All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kramer and a second by Commissioner West. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, may we please have a vote? Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. So now we will move on to review and possible approval of the minutes for the June third, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. Can I get a motion? All right, thank you. Any second? All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Kramer, a second by Commissioner Andriola. Any further discussion? May we please have a vote? Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. So now we will move on to public hearing items, and we will start with P C N two one dash zero zero one four.
No worries.
Sending this comprehensive plan amendment to you tonight. Subject site consists of twenty-three acre portion, which is outlined here in red, of a larger one hundred and eighteen point six acre site. Okay. Subject site consists of twenty-three acre portion of the larger one hundred and eighteen point six acre parcel shown here. It's outlined in red and the larger portion outlined in blue, and is part of the former DeAndrea Golf Course, which is outlined in blue, as I said. Current owner of the property, I P C DeAndrea L L C, has authorized the applicant, DeAndrea Phoenix Acquisition L L C, to pursue this amendment of the comprehensive plan. Staff has been informed that the applicant is currently in escrow for this property. The DeAndrea Handbook does not require DeAndrea Community Association approval for a property owner to pursue a comp plan amendment. Approval of this C P A would bring the comprehensive plan in conformance with the DeAndrea Plan Development Handbook. The designated Monticello Village, which is twelve and a half acres, while also explaining the M F fourteen land use designation to an additional ten and a half acres, allowing for development through a future amendment to the handbook. On this slide, the current land use is shown as open space, as you can see here, outlined in the blue within the larger project area. And the proposed land use is M F fourteen. During the Planning Commission Study Session, a question was asked earlier about the existing power lines that cross the twenty-three acre site. It is part of the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan Utility Corridor Map, and the area we're looking at here is circled in blue. And there are easements present that will prevent development from underneath those lines. The DeAndrea Golf Course was originally approved as part of the handbook. When the handbook was adopted in nineteen ninety-eight, pursuant to the handbook's land use plan, the golf course was designated open space, which also met the City of Sparks' comprehensive land use of open space as well. In two thousand nine, city approved that latest amendment to the DeAndrea Plan Development, changing that twelve and a half acre portion of the larger one hundred and eighteen point six parcel to low-medium density residential, or L M D R, which is fourteen dwelling units per acre, for a seventy-two unit, single-family residential project known as Monticello Village. A tentative map was approved also at that time. That tentative map has since expired. No corresponding amendment to the comprehensive plan was considered by the city at that time. It was part of, originally to be included with that handbook amendment, but was tabled by the Planning Commission and was never brought forward subsequently. The trip generation letter that is included in your staff report packet shows that the current I T E trip generation standards will generate fewer trips than the previous study. And the applicant's fiscal impact analysis does demonstrate an overall positive fiscal impact of approximately one point six million dollars to the city. So up to this point, I've discussed the proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan. Now, we'll go ahead and discuss the four required findings, which is a lot better than our tentative maps of twelve. So it should go pretty quickly. Pursuant to the regional plan, the subject site has a regional plan Tier Two land use designation and is located within the Truckee Meadows Service Area, or T M S A. Properties in the Tier Two land designation are characterized by suburban development, and residential density is limited to a maximum of thirty dwelling units per acre. So the proposed M F Four comprehensive plan land use designation does allow for a density range from ten to less than fourteen, and then therefore complies with the regional plan policy R F Three, because this range is below the maximum allowed density of thirty dwelling units per acre for Tier Two designated land. Staff's conclusion that the requested comprehensive plan land use amendment complies with policy C F One and policy M G Four, because emergency services are available to the site. Sewer and stormwater facilities are available in proximity to the site and can be upsized if necessary. Development of the subject site is projected to be fiscally positive for the city, with a fiscal impact analysis demonstrating a one point six million dollar surplus. Also, assuming the construction of the remaining two hundred and thirty dwelling units on the subject site, the trip generation letter projects the number of trips will be similar to the number of trips estimated in the traffic study included in the final handbook for nearly a full residential buildout of two thousand units, instead of the handbook permitted twenty-two hundred and thirty units. It will generate twenty-two fewer weekday A M peak hour trips and thirty-five fewer weekday P M peak hour trips than in the previous study. Any future handbook amendment will likely require a new traffic impact analysis at that time, accounting for the full twenty-two hundred and thirty unit buildout permitted in the handbook. The surrounding uses are discussed in C P Three. Changing the comprehensive plan land use designation from O S to M F fourteen is compatible with surrounding land use designations as properties located southwest and east of the subject site are designated low-density residential, or L D R, and O S. Properties located north of the subject site are designated multi-family residential, M F twenty-four, L D R, and O S. The M F fourteen comprehensive land use designation supports high-density, single-family, and low-density, multi-family uses. This designation is compatible, adjacent to residences located in the L D R and M F twenty-four land use categories, and acts as a buffer between the higher-density M F twenty-four residential use to the north of the project and relatively lower-density L D R residential uses to the remaining surrounding area. Public notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and the Planning Commission and City Council meetings function as public hearings for this matter. A neighborhood meeting was conducted by the applicant on June seventh of two thousand twenty-one. That's Exhibit Four, the certification or verification for neighborhood meeting. That's in your packet. Seventy-three people signed the register as attending the meeting. The amendment was presented to those in attendance. Concerns expressed by the attendees were traffic impacts, water availability, the development of apartments, and impacts to quality of life. As of noon today, there have only been two public inquiries addressed to the city without expression of support or opposition to the amendment and are located in front of you on the dais. So. Staff does recommend approval of this comprehensive plan amendment. It's provided recommendation for you. Should the Planning Commission choose to approve, this concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions. We also have our transportation manager and representative of the applicant is here as well.
All right, thank you, Danny. Are there any questions for staff at this time? No? So does the applicant have anything they would like to add to the presentation at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, for the record, Andy Durling with Wood Rogers. Staff did a very thorough job of presenting the matter, and we would just be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tried to get away there, Andy. I had a question about really the configuration of the proposed land use. Looking at the east and south, adjacent to the south, to the existing single-family. I was curious why the M F fourteen is being proposed on that really tiny sliver there. I don't know if that would be large enough to really ever support any type of development.
This guy? So, can you see my mouse?
Yeah.
So this, this kind of panhandle there, yeah. So a couple reasons. One, you'll see, you know, there are some carve-outs in here. This is the existing maintenance facility. So obviously, we weren't looking to remaster plan that. It's going to stay as is. This panhandle portion here would be the secondary access, so we've worked with city staff on that, kind of ahead of this comprehensive plan amendment. So we felt like it was necessary to kind of include that, since it would be part of kind of a contemplated future project. Also, you know, quite frankly, it gets the total acreage up to twenty-three acres, which we're looking at kind of that minimum ten dwelling unit per acre range under the M F fourteen to capture the remaining two hundred and thirty units that are within the DeAndrea Handbook.
Follow-up, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And so I appreciate that. That's helpful. I was kind of thinking along those same lines, maybe access. I didn't think there'd be an apartment building built there. The other question I had was, there's a regional utility corridor that runs through, through the site. What's the point of having a M F fourteen land use underneath an area that's tied up with easements that can never be developed?
So the, the, there's actually two easements for transmission lines that go through the property. While we wouldn't be able to construct structures underneath of it, there's a regional requirement for a ten-foot step back. We would have the ability to possibly have amenities and/or parking and things like that, you know, horizontal improvements rather than vertical improvements under there. So again, you know, there will be a clustering of the units, and we anticipate, you know, being able to utilize at least a portion of the land under those, those utility lines for, like I said, some sort of horizontal improvement or recreational amenity.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. This is a public hearing item, and so I will now open a public comment. We've got one comment card, so start with George Farnsworth. And just please state your name for the record.
Name is George Farnsworth.
All right, go ahead, sir.
I'm probably coming in a little late in this discussion on the development here at at DeAndrea. The concerns I have are the, are the traffic, the police and fire, and, and schools, and what is the L L C intended use? My, my first question is, we're going to have two hundred and twenty-six units, probably two cars maybe for each unit, sometimes more. And the R T C study for the, for this area was done for Vista Boulevard. It wasn't done for the Martini Parkway and so forth. Five hundred units, cars, everybody having two cars, five hundred units going to work at eight in the morning, coming home at five at night. If each car's given about twenty, twenty foot, that's five hundred cars, that's two miles bumper to bumper cars coming up that road, new cars. Now, I don't know what the, what the response, what the time would be to travel and get through, down to Bering Boulevard and Vista, and turn right or left or go straight ahead. But it seems like to me that would take probably an hour or so out of your day just to get, get that far. Now, maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong, but that's something, something to think about. What is the response time for your fire? The fire department, the closest one, I believe, is almost all of Weedada McCarron. Do we have their input? Do we have input for the school? Now, the last thing we have is the, the owners started out for a non-whole golf course and a wedding venue, and now they, then they had somewhere in there for a concert venue. And the wedding venue is spot traffic and the concert is spot traffic. And that would be tying up quite a bit of the, the area. But maybe that would not be during the morning hours and evening hours, coming home for work. And I've noticed that every, you know, everything is sort of predicated on closing and so forth for the new owners. And are the new owners waiting for this to settle up before they close their deal? Was, is that their main, main reason? I don't, I don't have any idea, but we don't have any track record for these people. They haven't finished the golf course. They haven't done the wedding venue, and they haven't done the concert part. So everything is sort of up in the air and it's sort of hanging around. We haven't seen any really positive things except cutting the grass. So that's, that's about all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, then we will close public comment. There any other, any further discussion from the commission? Commissioner Carey, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Danny, I thought of another question. I was curious about what the loss of ten and a half acres of open space would do to the requirements in the handbook for DeAndrea for, for open space?
The handbook calls for twenty percent of the available land, or total land in the handbook, to be open space, and there's quite a bit more than that right now. I don't have the exact number for you. I can get it. But yeah, they already exceed that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. We're ready for that.
All right, yes, seeing no further discussion. Go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
I move to approve the comprehensive plan land, uh, land use amendment, M P A twenty-one dash zero 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 three, associated with P C N twenty-one dash zero zero fourteen, based on findings C P One through C P Four in the fact supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Uh, I think Commissioner West beat you to it. All right, so we have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Reed and a second by Commissioner West. Any final discussion? Uh, yes, Commissioner Kramer. Oh, nope, all right. Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments before the, before the vote. You know, I concur with staff's assessment that the L M D R land use designation that's on this site from the DeAndrea Handbook Amendment in two thousand nine is, is compatible with the M F fourteen land use that's, that's being proposed tonight. The previously approved handbook amendment has already established that the twelve point five acres on this site is, that has the L M D R land use, that permits the same density that's being proposed on the additional ten and a half acres for the M F fourteen. I think the key question for tonight for the commission on this motion is whether expanding the, the land use to the additional ten and a half acres is consistent with the goals and policies of the city's comprehensive plan and compatible with, with, with the area and the DeAndrea Handbook overall. The way, to me, I, I believe that it does. I think that there's enough permitted units left over in the DeAndrea Handbook to accommodate the proposed density that's being proposed by, by the land use. And from reviewing the staff report, I concur with staff that the proposed land use is going to support goal M G Six and policy M G eleven. I think that this land use change is going to help advance these policies and encourage compact development in this area of the city, which will help reduce per capita costs for infrastructure, public facilities, and public service, other public services. So we'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. We've had a motion and a second, so may we please have the vote? Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Danny. All right, we will now move on to P C N twenty dash zero 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 five.
So, thank you, Chair Britzos. Good evening, Planning Commission members. For the record, Sienna Reed with the Planning Division. Thanks for the couple of extra minutes to, to get set up here. So this presentation is actually covering three requests associated with the Urban Lofts Townhomes Project. The first is a comprehensive plan amendment, the second is a rezoning request, and then the third is a tentative map request. So in regards to the agenda, the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning requests are going to be heard under item seven. The presentation is also going to cover item eight, which is the tentative map request, just in terms of orienting you to, to your agenda in relationship to this presentation. It's important to note that only the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning request tonight require a public hearing. The tentative map does not require a public hearing prior to Planning Commission action. The Urban Loft Site is bound in red on the slide that you can see before you now. It includes two parcels that together total two point three six acres in size. As you can see, the site is located to the east of Robert Mitchell Elementary School. That's to the east of, of Twelfth Street, and then also to the north of Prater Way. The site is currently developed with two former church buildings and then also one detached, single-family home. Use of the site for the, the western larger parcel, that portion of the site for church-related operations ceased in two thousand twenty, and both of those buildings are, are now currently vacant. As proposed, the comprehensive plan amendment request would change the land use designation on the western two point one nine acre portion of the site from mixed-use district civic, or M U D C V, to mixed-use district mixed-residential, or M U D M R. Redesigning, redesignating that western parcel to M U D M R would remove the opportunity to establish civic and institutional uses in favor of a broader range of residential and commercial uses. And notably, the western parcel was designated mixed-residential prior to the adoption of the city's comprehensive plan in two thousand sixteen. The associated rezoning request applies to both of the parcels included in the site. As proposed, these parcels would be rezoned from public facilities, or P F, to mixed-use district, or M U D. There are four districts within the city's mixed-use zoning district that regulate permitted uses as well as development standards. These districts you'll be familiar with include the downtown Victorian Square District, the mixed-use commercial district, mixed-residential district, and residential neighborhood district. And they correspond to a property's comprehensive plan land use designation. So if we approve tonight, both the, or if the Planning Commission chooses to approve both the comprehensive plan amendment request and rezoning request, the site would then be designated mixed-use district, mixed-residential, and zoned M U D with the application of those mixed residential standards in code. Little bit complicated, but basically everything trues up with itself, and, and we have a property that allows, would be permitting a mix of residential and commercial uses. So in terms of those permitted uses, the mixed residential portion of the M U D allows for a variety of residential uses. Those would include duplexes, multifamily buildings, personal services on the commercial side, as well as brochure food markets, breweries, urban wineries. And so really kind of, as, as noted, that expanded mix. Rather than institutional uses that would be permitted by the existing P F zoning, those uses that are permitted by the existing zoning tend more towards things like parks and hospitals, libraries, cultural institutions, and such. As the site is adjacent to Prater Way, as you can see on these maps, the mixed residential portion of the M U D zone does require residential development to meet a minimum density standard of twenty-four dwelling units per acre and non-residential development to meet a minimum floor area ratio of zero point seven five. Looking at the parameters of the tentative map request with this slide, the tentative map that is being considered concurrently with the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning requests consists of fifty-seven townhome lots on the two point three six acre site. The lots range in size from seven hundred and twelve to nine hundred and forty-four square feet, and together and together they comprise one acre of the site. The remaining one point three six acres of the site is proposed, uh, as common area to include, uh, landscaped areas, open space, and then also private driveways. As you can see on this slide, the gross density of the project would be twenty-four point two dwelling units per acre, which does comply with that mixed residential portion of the MUD zone. On this slide, you can see the preliminary landscape plan that illustrates, uh, the overall subdivision design. The fifty-seven townhome, uh, lots are arranged in a series of lots that would enable, uh, four, six, seven, and eight-unit townhome buildings. Access, as you can see on this slide, is, uh, from the north on G Street via these two driveways. Each townhome unit, uh, while you don't have the floor plans on this slide, is proposed to have, uh, two garage parking spaces, and then, as you can see on this slide, we have a variety of surface, uh, parking spaces uh, within the central portion of the project site. Those total nineteen, uh, spaces at this point, uh, but there may be a need to remove two of them, uh, just to enable safe backup movements. Uh, that said, even with that potential removal of two parking spaces, there would be a minimum of one hundred and thirty-one off-street parking spaces provided for the, uh, proposed subdivision, and code requires fifty-seven parking spaces, which is a rate of one parking space per dwelling unit. So, as proposed, uh, with that minimum or that one hundred and thirty-one acre, or one hundred and thirty-one parking space count, uh, the project would exceed, uh, code by a hundred and thirty-two percent in terms of our minimum parking standards. Uh, the slide that you can see, or this slide shows the prelim- preliminary building elevations for the proposed townhome lots that front out, uh, onto Prater Way. Uh, as you can see, they are three stories, uh, and they have an eve height of thirty feet. In terms of, uh, this next slide that you can see also, uh, building elevations, but they're for a different portion of the project site. They're the buildings that front onto the eastern property line. Uh, these particular building elevations, uh, are a little bit different than the ones that front out onto Prater Way, and that's because they're adjacent to one-story structures. And so here, the Sparks Municipal Code does require when you have, uh, buildings that are more than, uh, one story in height above adjacent, uh, residences, that you apply residential transition standards, residential infill standards in our code. Um, and you have to meet a minimum of three residential transition techniques. And so what we, uh, can see on this particular slide with these elevations is that, uh, the building height will be stepped down, uh, to meet the height of existing homes. And you can see that with this, uh, building bump out, uh, and you, the little, uh, almost kind of teeth-looking, uh, bump outs along this eastern property line. As proposed, the building, uh, roofline and, uh, pitch would be similar to the adjacent residential structures to the east, and we also have an increased side yard setback. So, for the proposed, uh, mixed residential portion of the MUD, the side setback is actually zero feet, and so what code requires is a increase of at least five feet and that that increase be landscaped. And what is proposed with the tentative map request is a twenty-two-foot side yard setback that would be landscaped. All right, so with this slide, we'll, we'll shift gears to the findings, uh, that the Planning Commission needs to consider tonight. Given that we're gonna be going through, through, through requests, uh, I think you'll be, you know, uh, aware that we have a variety of findings to, to discuss. So, uh, to start off with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and rezoning findings, uh, you can see those findings starting on this slide. They are grouped together. The tentative map, uh, findings are gonna be held separately, uh, and following, uh, these findings for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and rezoning requests. So findings, uh, related to conformance and consistency address conformance with the Trucky Meadows Regional Plan and then also with the City of Sparks Comprehensive Plan. On this slide, you can see finding CP one that requires, uh, the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation Change conform with the land use and intensity designation in the regional plan. So what is that designation? It's, uh, this particular site is designated, uh, as part of the mixed-use core for the regional plan, and that designation in the regional plan requires development meet a minimum of fourteen dwelling units per acre for residential development and a minimum FAR of zero point two five for non-residential development. So given that the proposed MUD MR Comprehensive Plan Land Use requires a minimum of twenty-four uh, dwelling units per acre for residential development and zero point seven five, uh, FAR for non-residential development, the Comprehensive Plan Land Use category is, is well in excess of what's required by the regional plan. Finding CP two that you can see on this slide requires the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to implement the goals of the Comprehensive Plan, and then finding Z one for the rezoning requires that the rezoning also be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Here, both the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and rezoning requests support that broader range of residential and non-residential uses. That would encourage infill, redevelopment, and walkability within the city's mixed-use district in support of goal MG four and then also policy C seven. The subject site is also located in an area that was previously developed where services are present today. While the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and rezoning requests may allow for more intense uses, uh, than would be allowed under the existing MUD CV land use designation and PF zoning, city services can be provided to the site at acceptable service levels in compliance with policy CF one. Here, emergency services are available and they will be provided to future uses of the site. Sewer and stormwater facilities are in proximity to the subject site and can be upsized if necessary, depending on the use, uh, if it would be a more intense site or a more intense use of the site. Traffic generation has also been analyzed by the applicant. A trip generation letter indicated that for the fifty-seven townhome lots, um, we would have, uh, trips, uh, averaging, or, excuse me, um, average daily trips totaling three hundred and ninety. Those trips were analyzed by the city's transportation manager, and, uh, it was determined that the existing roadway network can accommodate those trips. In the event that the townhome subdivision is not constructed, the applicant also provided us with diff- uh, some supplemental information, uh, analyzing trips for the highest intensity uses that could be supported by the existing zoning in place today and the proposed zoning. That analysis demonstrated that a shopping center in the proposed MUD MR land use designation and MUD zone would generate more trips than a government office building in the MUD CV land use and PF zoning. However, both of those uses would have higher trip generation than is proposed with the fifty-seven townhome lots being considered concurrently, uh, with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and rezoning requests. And importantly, in the event that the townhome subdivision is not constructed, any future use that generates eighty or more, uh, peak hour trips would be required to sub- to submit a traffic analysis, and that would help staff to determine what are potential off-site improvements that might be necessary to mitigate traffic impacts. And so, uh, with all of those considerations, uh, the request, uh, in staff's opinion is consistent with policy CF one. Moving on to compatibility, the findings on this slide, each focus on compatibility with surrounding land uses, finding CP three for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and then finding Z two for the rezoning. Um, as proposed, the MUD MR Comprehensive Plan Land Use and MUD zoning district would preclude, as we've been discussing, the possible establishment of certain, uh, civic and institutional uses on the site in favor of that greater variety of residential and commercial uses. This range of residential and commercial uses on the site is compatible with surrounding properties to the north, south, and east. They are already designated MUD MR and zoned MUD. The proposed land use and zoning designations are also compatible with the existing school to the west of the site. Properties to the north, uh, south, and west of the school are also already designated MUD MR and zoned MUD. And so redesignating and rezoning the site as proposed would allow that same range of residential and commercial uses, uh, to the east of the school. Finding CP four and Z three each require public notice be given, uh, as required by code and state law. For both these requests, the Planning Commission and City Council meetings do function as public hearings. And with the proposed Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment, uh, mailed notices for a neighborhood meeting as required by law, those were mailed to property owners within seven hundred and fifty feet of the site, and a neighborhood meeting was conducted, uh, by the applicant's representative on June eighth of this year. There were eight people that attended that meeting, and those in attendance expressed concerns regarding traffic impacts as well as the availability of on-street parking. They also had detailed questions about the design of the proposed subdivision. Uh, in addition, uh, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment was noticed, uh, in the Reno Gazette-Journal, uh, and then for the rezoning, uh, mailed notice was also provided, uh, for notice of this public hearing to property owners within seven hundred and fifty feet, and two hundred and thirty-one property owners were mailed notices with that, uh, set of notices that went out. Uh, moving on to the tentative map findings that the Planning Commission needs to consider this evening, uh, with this slide. For the most part, all of these findings are in numerical order, uh, except for a couple that are related to streets just to keep that topic together. So starting off with finding T one, which is conformance with the city's Comprehensive Plan. Uh, the fifty-seven lots that are proposed with this tentative map request will provide a townhome housing product that enhances housing diversity in Sparks, and that does comply with policy H two. Looking at policy C four, sidewalks on Prater Way and Twelfth Street are already in place. They will be retained, and a new sidewalk on G Street will be installed consistent with policy C four. And, uh, as previously discussed, city services to the site can be provided at acceptable service levels. With this next slide, we have findings T two and T seven. Those each relate to streets. For conformance with the city's street master plan, project access is provided from G Street. No access from Prater Way or Twelfth Street is proposed. Finding T seven focuses on impacts to public streets. Uh, the roadway network, uh, that does surround the subject site uh, is not anticipated to change in terms of the number of travel lanes, uh, in that, uh, roadway network. And, uh, as I discussed earlier, the trip generation letter that was provided by the applicant indicates that the townhome units will generate three hundred and ninety average daily trips. Uh, in terms of the peak hour trips, twenty-eight of those would be in the AM peak hour, and thirty-six of them would be in the PM peak hour. That's a relatively low amount of trips, uh, that does not necessitate that traffic impact analysis that is required when you exceed that eighty peak hour trip threshold. Um, however, as we, uh, previously discussed, the city's transportation manager has evaluated the proposed subdivision, the surrounding road- roadway network, and determined that there is adequate capacity to accommodate the fifty-seven townhome units. Um, in addition, RTC did provide comments seeking clarification, uh, regarding the source, source and method of trip generation, um, estimates that were provided by the applicant. Um, here, there was a slight difference just in terms of, uh, the methodology used from the ITE or Institute of, uh, Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. Uh, that difference is, is relatively small, and both methods are acceptable. Uh, and that is something that our transportation manager has also weighed in, noting, um, that either is acceptable per, uh, standard engineering practices in traffic modeling. Moving on to finding T three, agencies that regulate environmental impacts. They did not provide comments associated with the request. Uh, however, the developer does have to, uh, meet any local county and state requirements in regards to environmental impacts. Finding T four asks the commission to consider availability of water to the site. Here, the domestic water requirement for fifty-seven townhome units is just slightly over eight acre feet per year, and that municipal water service is proposed to be provided by TMA or the Trucky Meadows Water Authority. Finding T five looks to the availability of utilities that serve the site, uh, includes sewer, storm drain capacity. Uh, in terms of sewage generation, uh, the proposed townhome units would generate, um, almost thirty-one thousand gallons of sewage per day. The applicant does have to demonstrate the adequate, uh, sewer capacity is available to, uh, treat that amount of sewage. Uh, however, uh, ultimately, the city has done an advanced run of its sewer model and determined in terms of the pipe network that there is adequate capacity to accommodate, uh, the sewage generated by the proposed subdivision. Uh, in addition, final stormwater and drainage, uh, plans for the development must also be provided, uh, prior to reporting a final map. Finding T six looks to the availability of schools, police, transportation, and parks. For schools, the Wausau County School District, uh, comments indicate that the project will add less than one new student to each Mitchell Elementary School, Sparks Middle School, and Sparks High School, and that these schools do have sufficient capacity to accommodate that student generation. For police, the Sparks Police Department will provide services to the site. They did not provide, uh, any concerns regarding the current proposal, and as previously discussed, the roadway network is adequate to accommodate the trips associated with the proposed subdivision. Uh, existing parks will also serve, uh, residents of the subdivision. Finding T eight addresses floodplain, slopes, and soils. The lots proposed with this tentative map do not fall within the one-hundred-year floodplain. The site is predominantly flat. It does not trigger any type of code standards for sites that contain significant slopes, and in regards to soils, final geotechnical reports are required at the time of final map. In regards to finding T nine, uh, for outside agency responses, here the only of the responses that were received on this request were from the school district and RTC, and, and those were each previously discussed. Finding ten asks the commission to consider the availability of fire protection services. Fire protection will be provided by the Sparks Fire Department, and the site is located within the four-minute travel time standard for the fire department. Finding T eleven looks to other impacts identified in staff's analysis of the proposal. Um, here we've identified landscaping area maintenance, architecture for the residences, residential infill, surface parking, and a portion of the site that is located, uh, within the right-of-way for Prater Way. So, in terms of the conditions, uh, that have been drafted for your consideration to address those impacts, condition twelve addresses landscaping with the requirement that a homeowners association or other similar mechanism maintain that landscaping. Condition thirteen requires final architectural elevations be approved prior to final map. Condition fourteen requires final architectural elevations and site improvements that comply with the residential infill standards that were previously discussed. Uh, as proposed, the, the project does, but we just make sure that it still does at the time of final map. Condition, uh, sixteen requires a final site improvement plan that demonstrates adequate space for backing movements. Uh, as we discussed, that, that is necessary. And then, uh, condition fifteen requires, uh, an area along, uh, Prater Way within the Prater Way right-of-way that includes landscaping and sidewalk improvements either be abandoned to the property owner or formalized with an occupancy permit and maintenance agreement prior to reporting a final map. And then finally, uh, finding T twelve that you can see on this slide requires the public be notified, uh, also of the tentative map. That is accomplished through the posting of the agenda for, uh, tonight's meeting, and so that was done, uh, last week on, on June twenty-fifth. And in regards to public comment, uh, staff has received two emails seeking, uh, additional information but not expressing any, um, opposition or, uh, support for any of the requests, uh, that are under consideration tonight. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and then forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for the rezoning and tentative map requests. There are suggested motions for the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment and then rezoning requests on this slide. I also have another slide for the tentative map, uh, suggested motion, should you need that. Um, but with that, I will wrap up, conclude this presentation and be available for questions. We also have the applicant's representative and, and staff, uh, from engineering and our transportation manager here, should you need to ask any questions of them.
Okay, thank you very much, Sienna. Are there questions for staff at this time? I have a real quick question, Sienna. Just out of curiosity, why, why is, uh, access only gonna be on, on G Street and not on, say, Twelfth as well?
Yeah, um, so, interestingly enough, access was actually, uh, proposed at one time on Twelfth, but it, it needed to be a little bit- but it needed to be a little bit further back from the intersection of Prater Way and Twelfth Street, just to accommodate safe movements in and out from the project site. And so, in working through changes with the applicant, they decided to go ahead and just go with the two access points off of G Street so that that safety was maintained.
Oh, okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, would the applicant like to add anything?
Good evening, for the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation. Also with me tonight is Lisa Nash with Christie Corporation, as well as Travis Marshall and J.R. Hildebrand, the project engineers with Tech Engineering. I just, I put that up, that's a, Sienna presented the black-and-white elevations. That's just a color rendering of those same elevations. Looking, that's essentially at the corner of Twelfth and Prater, looking, looking north. So, we are in agreement with all the conditions. I think Sienna did a great job presenting, and we're happy to answer questions. I would like to touch on the access along Twelfth Street. I also met with former council member John Mayer, who lives in the neighborhood and actually taught at Robert Mitchell School for years. And he told me, because you know, all the kindergartners get dropped off on Twelfth Street, and it'd be nice if we could move that access up to G, and so that was another reason for that change.
All right, yeah, thank you for that. Any questions for the applicant, Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike, good to see you in person. I had a question about the proposed land use on the site and then subsequently the rezoning. I was curious why this project is not proposing a higher density. Obviously, the twenty-four dwelling use to the acre is the minimum. It could be considerably higher. I'm just curious about the proposed size.
The primary reason is this is actually a for-sale product. And to get higher density and still be able to meet parking requirements, that's really, it really requires a multifamily, you know, an apartment-type project or a high-density condominium. These will be for-sale units, so they wanted to provide those individual garages. And to get to the twenty-four units, I will tell you, is a challenge to provide that type of mix. But I think if you, if you look up and down the corridor and with what's going on downtown, there's a lot of multifamily units and not a lot of for-sale units. So, I think this would be a nice addition to the market.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other questions?
I have a, Mr. Chair, I have a procedural question. If you are prepared, I'm prepared to make a motion at this time, but I do have a procedural question.
I have a question. Then, are we doing, like, public comment discussion and voting on each of the three things individually?
I would recommend yes, because each, each of the items, you're required to make different findings. There might be different discussion on the different findings for each of the three. So, I would recommend opening up each one individually.
All right, thank you. Okay, so.
Chair.
Yeah.
Chair Pritzker, Armando, and Ellis. Only two of the items are required public hearing.
Right, okay. Okay, so then I will open a public comment on the first part, which is the comprehensive plan land use amendment. I did not receive any cards on that specific part, but does anyone wish to speak on the comprehensive plan land use amendment? Okay, seeing none, then I will close public comment on that section, and we will open it up for discussion on the land use amendment. Any discussion? Commissioner Carey?
I had a question for staff, but I don't want to make Sienna walk over here.
Oh, no!
I'm sorry. Thank you, Sienna.
Of course.
The proposed development is strictly residential. It's a single-use development, and this is probably a prime redevelopment opportunity within the mixed-use core of the city. I was curious, from staff's perspective, from a comprehensive plan perspective, does staff feel that a, that a single use on this site would help achieve the goals and policies of our mixed-use district?
So, if I could, Mr. Chair, to Commissioner Carey's question. So, while the comprehensive plan land use amendment and rezoning would allow for a wider range of uses, residential and commercial, certainly, both are envisioned within those proposed designations. And we just happen to know, because we have a concurrent tentative map coming forward, that it is a fully residential subdivision that is, that is desired to be constructed on the site. And so, certainly, from the comp plan amendment and rezoning side of things, just given that the site is adjacent to an existing elementary school and surrounded by that mixed-use district, mixed residential land use, and then MUD zoning, going to something that would have been more intense probably wouldn't have been appropriate. And so, having a residential product come forward under what is proposed as, you know, the land use and zoning that is common to the area certainly does make sense for the site. And from a market perspective, you know, we certainly know that we have a strong demand for housing right now. And, you know, as the applicant noted, that housing from a for-sale housing product perspective can really provide some advantages from a price point when you're looking for housing options that provide people with ownership opportunities, not just simply rental opportunities. So, we do think that that full residential product, product is definitely advantageous from that housing diversity side of things, as noted in the findings. And, you know, the other side of that coin is, you know, there's, there's definitely softening in terms of demand for, for commercial space. So, we definitely think that the tentative map and its, and its full, you know, residential development proposal is appropriate on the site. It does comply with the comprehensive plan policies and certainly the code standards for the proposed zoning district.
Thank you, Sienna, I won't make you walk back again. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other discussion on this particular point? All right, then, I am looking for a motion specifically on the comprehensive plan land use amendment.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm prepared to make the motion, but I have a point of clarification, if I may.
Yep, go ahead.
The agenda reference of PCN twenty-dash-triple-zero-five is different than the subject that's been presented as PCN twenty-one-dash-triple-zero-five. So, in the motion, I don't know if you want me to refer to PCN twenty-dash-triple-zero-five and PCN twenty-one-dash-triple-two-zero-five?
I see what you're saying.
Procedurally?
Yeah, so in the request, it says PCN twenty-one, but on the agenda, it just says PCN twenty.
Right, but we officially, this is a public approved document.
I will defer to legal on this one.
Oh, I see what you're saying, the twenty versus twenty-one, yeah, it's, it's twenty-one.
So, in the motion, do you want it refreshed? Are you recommending that it be ref-?
The motion, I think, is correct.
Okay.
Correct, Armando, it's twenty-one, it's our internal labeling system.
Okay.
Okay.
I just noticed it was different and didn't want the record to reflect something different. So, I move to approve the comprehensive plan land use amendment as filed MPA twenty-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-one associated with PCN twenty-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-five based on findings CP one through CP four and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Andriola, a second by Commissioner Kramer. Any further discussion? Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of comments for the record before we vote. I think regarding the proposed land use change, I concur with staff's analysis that the proposed change from MUD CV to MUD MR is going to support goal MG four, goal MG five, policy MG eleven, policy C seven, and policy CF one in our comprehensive plan. You know, given the site's proximity along the primary investment corridor and its prominence within our mixed-use district, I think an argument, a pretty strong argument could be made that the density of this proposed project should be a lot higher. And, but I think, you know, they're, they're coming in basically at the minimum density. I know we're working on the comprehensive land use consideration right now. But I think, given, in this instance, the proposed density and the configuration of this proposed land use is appropriate, given the proximity along the mixed-use core and next to the established neighborhood. I like the orientation of the proposed subdivision and what's proposed. And I think it does show somewhat of a sensitivity to the character of the neighborhood, and quite frankly, it could be a lot more, a lot higher density. I also feel that a higher density probably would not be appropriate and would have a greater impact. So, I will be supporting the motion on the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other discussion? All right, then seeing none, we have a motion and a second, so may we please have a vote? Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously, so we will now move on to the rezoning aspect. So, this is also a public comment or a public hearing item. So, I will open public comment on this. I have received two cards. Start with Dimitri Kolinsky, followed by Donna Kolinsky. That's easy.
Yes, my name is Mitka Kolinsky. I'm a Holocaust survivor here, so pardon my diffusion sometimes. I could not hear, understand you, what you were saying. Only when I could understand gentlemen right here. You, you were too far away from the, from the, what do you call it? Phone, so I could not understand half of what you guys were talking about. I'm very much involved in this, I would like to be. If I could hear you, I, I didn't want to interrupt you. So, that's, that's, I would have to say, I'm sorry, I could not hear you, understand you. Only gentlemen, I could understand is Scott over here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Donna Kolinsky. Think you forgot a lot of what he wanted to say. My parents have owned the properties at eight nineteen and eight twenty-one Twelfth Street since nineteen sixty-one. I live next door to them, so we have those two properties. There's a lot of traffic already on that street, and Twelfth and G is a place where nobody stops at that stop sign. I've, since I've lived there in two years, it's countless accidents. And adding all these units, these additional cars, is there anything that could be done to quell the traffic, to put calming devices, something at those intersections to alleviate that? There's lots of kids that run around the neighborhood. Also, on-street parking, so if there's that many units going in with just very, you know, garages, obviously, but minimal parking spots for their guests, they're going to be parking on Twelfth Street. Now, I know during Fourth of July or any event downtown, people park along both sides of the street and it becomes a single lane of traffic. The only way to get around is to pull into driveways, you know, where there're blocks. So, it's just an issue, and we're very concerned that that increase in traffic is going to really impact the people right there at Twelfth and G. I think that's it. Anything else, Dad?
I have a lot of things to say if I could understand what was going on.
I think that's it, then.
All right, thank you very much.
I am very much concerned about, excuse me, about the school kids. I had the sidewalk put in about some twenty years ago, maybe some of you maybe remembered or not. I had sidewalk put in because I was concerned about children walking on the street. At those, at those days, you had only about sixteen inches that kids could walk between the fence and the curb.
It was more like forty years ago.
And, and, and I went around and I give up some of the land to have that sidewalk board, which is a city border sidewalk for the kids. But on the other side, you don't have that. So, if I could understand what was all about, if the zoning change, I would say, no. I, 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 not for that zoning change. So, if you permit me to say that.
How about you?
No, I was going to simply suggest that if you were going to allow the additional public comment, that it be, you know, the gentleman be brought up to the podium and then formally conduct it that way.
Yeah. All right, so are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, then I will close public comment on the rezoning and bring it back to the commission. Any discussion? Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I had a question for our transportation manager. We just heard in public comment about some concerns about G and Twelfth Street and the stop sign. And I know I've personally got a ticket from running that stop sign in the past. I was ticketed, though. I know it's a dangerous intersection. I know that there's not any off-site improvements or road improvements that are, that are proposed. I was just curious in your assessment about traffic calming that may be necessary from, from the proposed develop, or proposed rezoning?
Thank you for the record, Amber Sosa, transportation manager. So, at the city, we have a traffic calming program. And what it does is it allows residents, such as we heard tonight under public comment, to submit these types of issues. And it triggers us to go and to look at them. If there's a study involved, such as a speed study or a volume study, we can conduct that. We can look at line of sight, perhaps Commissioner Carey didn't see the stop sign. I'm trying to help you out. But we can definitely look at all those safety things. And then from that, we determine whether traffic calming is appropriate, what we can do, and what type of records. So, I would, I would absolutely encourage anybody in the neighborhood to either contact me or look at our traffic calming program, and we can look at it, whether it's an infrastructure problem or an enforcement problem.
Thank you, Amber, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion on the rezoning.
Chairman Pritzker, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner West.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for the rezoning request, RZ twenty-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-one associated with the PCN twenty-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-five based on findings Z one through Z three and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner West and a second by Commissioner Rossin. Any final discussion? All right, seeing none, may we please have a vote? Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, so we will now move on to the third part of this, which is the tentative map request. This is not a public hearing item, so we will jump straight to discussion. Any discussion from the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I know it's outside of our, of our review, and we're looking at a tentative map right now. But along the lines of condition fourteen and the architectural elevations, one thing that I would encourage staff to take a look at when they get the administrative review on this one is to take a closer look at the elevations and look at the neighborhood and, in particular, historic Robert Mitchell School across the street. Just looking at the elevations, and this is just one citizen's opinion, I think it would be nice to maybe incorporate some, some brick or some other design elements to help match the proposed elevations. I think the way that they are now, it kind of stands out. And I think, given the, in my comments about the comprehensive plan amendment, I like the orientation of this project. I like that it's set back from the neighborhoods to the east and to the north. I think it fits well. I, I, I think that there's some work that could possibly be done by staff in the elevations, and take that for what it's worth. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion on the tentative map.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the tentative map requests STM twenty-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-two associated with PCN- map requests, STM twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-two, associated with PCN twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-five, adopting findings T one through T twelve, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, and subject to conditions of approval one through sixteen.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Reed and a second by Commissioner Andriola. Any final discussion? All right, seeing none, may we please have a vote? Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. So, we will move on to item nine, which is our second general public comment period. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment and move on to item ten, announcements from staff and commissioners. We'll start with staff. Any announcements at this time?
Thank you, Chair Pritzos, members of the planning commission, Armando Anellos, City Community Services Director. Again, a reminder that there will be a second meeting of the planning commission this month on July fifteenth. The other thing I wanted to note is that, as you are probably aware, the city is in the process of transitioning not just the city council but other boards and commissions to a, an agenda management system that ultimately will involve a device and software for you to vote on. We may be doing that with the planning commission as early as August. We will schedule some sort of training, you know, either in the form of a study session or otherwise, maybe in advance of a meeting, to get you up to speed, but just wanted to make you aware of that.
All right, thank you. Looking forward to that, that'll be nice. Any announcements from commissioners? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we adjourn tonight's meeting, I just wanted to extend my condolences to the family and friends of John Esquaga, who passed away earlier this week. As we all know, John was a legendary gaming pioneer and really one of the most significant people in the history of, of the city of Sparks. I think in his ninety-six years of life, he truly had an amazing business career developing the Sparks Nugget from a small coffee shop into one of the largest resorts we have in the area. I really think the development of the Nugget under John Esquaga and the Esquaga family really changed the trajectory of the city and the economy and the development of the city. I, I can remember I first met John in, at the opening of the East Tower, and I can recall when I served on the, on the Sparks Centennial Commission, that he and the family were very generous and supportive of that celebration, which was also the fiftieth anniversary of the Nugget opening up, so just wanted to acknowledge John Esquaga, his family, and all the contributions, both in business and in the community, over, over the years, and I would suggest perhaps, when the commission adjourns tonight, we do so in honor of John Esquaga.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Yes, I think we all probably have very good memories of spending at the Nugget. I know my cousin actually got one of his scholarships for college several years ago. Any other announcements? All right, then, if not, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's planning commission in memory of John Esquaga.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, may we please have a vote? Aye.
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 All right, motion passes, we are adjourned.
See y'all in two weeks.